Yes, indeed, I am. Thank you. If everybody's back, I can share my screen and start. So what we have is really two sets of buildings for architectural review and I grouped them by set. The first is buildings 12 through 15. These are on, these buildings are on the east side and they're the four two-story townhouses, which are, it can provide the transition from the larger buildings, transition from the mixed-use commercial back over to the residential, the residential area. And these four townhouses are exactly like the three townhouses that were across Route 44. And so the materials and construction are, remain the same. So, you know, rendering, you can see the buildings, the four units, two-story. There's two two-story units in the middle and three stor-, I'm sorry, two bedrooms in the middle and three bedroom units on the, on the ends. And I provided the elevations to the, to the, to the materials. We're gonna, we're gonna maintain the use of the hardy materials, maintain the use of the colors. The clavert will be the hardy arctic white. The trim is all hardy painted, again, the arctic white. So the trim, the cornerboard and the cornice. And the roof shingles, maintain the black onyx architectural roof shingles that we've used throughout. Did I stop with this and then, or do you want to, you want to do the all of them together?
We'll do both together. So that's essentially the same as the townhouses on the west side.
Absolutely.
Yep.
So then the, the next group of buildings 16 through 18. These are the three four-story, assuming we get the, get the various four-story buildings, elevator service buildings at the end of East Hill Avenue South. Again, these are going to be the same as buildings one, two, and three across the street. The elevator service buildings, the difference is they'll have an extra, an extra story. So here's the elevation, four-story elevation of buildings 16 and 17, which are identical. Again, the, you can see from the way we've dealt with the massing, where we've dealt with roof line, the, the gable, gable ends and the stairs and the balconies, again, to try to, try to reduce its, its massing as it's seen from the, on the front. And then building 18, which is a slightly shorter, truly is one less unit in the, in the middle here than on buildings 16 and 17. So it's the same, same architecture, it's just slightly, slightly different, slightly smaller. End view of the other buildings, all the buildings look the same on the, on the end view. So you can see the, the windows, the treatment. And these have, again, are clavert, but we've got the shakes up in the gables. The rest of it is the same hardy, hardy clavert you've seen.
Two different, two different hardy colors.
On the side of the street. And the colors, the, for the clavert, we're picking from the same palette that we picked from on the, on the other side, the arctic white, the light mist, the booth bay, booth bay blue, and the pewter gray. The shakes will either be arctic white or light mist. The trim is arctic white and the roof shingles are continuation of the black onyx.
In the cupola, that's basically the elevator shaft top, or is that?
No, it's actually just a cupola.
Oh, it actually is a cupola.
It's just an architectural feature.
Nobody's apartment gets that window view up there?
It's not, right, no, it's no access to that.
All right. So the elevator, elevator shaft head is kept within, underneath the?
Right, yeah, it's really, yes, it's hidden by the, by the, yes.
All right, great.
Balconies on the end units only?
Yes. So you can see, it's not, it's true, this, this, this building has some balconies on the, on the interior. It depends on the, on the design, so.
Any, anyone chime in, are there any comments?
My only comment is the, the buildings 12 through 15, the south elevation facing Darrow Place. You know, this not, the front of the building looks great. The back of the building is, is, there's going to be a lot of buffer between those buildings and Darrow Place. Yes?
There's, I'm trying to think of what the, how, how wide that buffer is. I believe it's either 40 or 50 feet, I can't remember.
But there's going to be substantial planting.
Yes, there are, yes, there's a substantial buffer in there, yes.
Because it's not really a great facade. The front of the building looks great. The back of the building, since it's going to be facing those homes on Darrow Place, not that great, but if there's going to be plenty of planting there, it'll give them a sufficient screen. I'm sure it'll be fine.
And again, there are patios out the, out the back of all these units as well, so there's a little more projection in the building than what you see in the building.
Okay, they have, you have your decorative shutters on the windows in the south elevation of those buildings? Are they functional?
No.
Okay. And what purpose did they, did they serve, just besides decorative?
It, it is just decorative.
Is there a window behind those shutters?
Oh, these, these, these shutters here, you're talking about these?
Yes.
Yeah.
16 is the?
16, yeah. Just says decorative shutter.
I don't believe there's a, I don't believe there's a window there, I'm not sure what the, what the function is.
Okay. Now that's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it's probably, yeah, the architect probably did it so all the windows don't look the same.
Indeed.
All right, any other comments from planning board members?
Just one question, and that is, since we're going to the ZBA.
Yes.
Well, would this condition be based on approval from the ZBA?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Just one clarification, since I put a couple of typos in there. The, the review says three, it's proposed to be three stories where in fact it's, the maximum is three stories, whereas the maximum is actually three and a half. And the variance is not a height, it's just a ZBA variance for the one, additional one-half story, not of the height.
Yep. All right.
So I just, can I ask you, just, just for, if there's, if the height is not part of the equation, then what height, could it be 60 feet?
It's within the 50-foot height limit.
There's a maximum of 50 feet of height in the district.
Okay, so it is 50.
It's 50 or three and a half stories. The applicant is looking for 50 and four stories.
Right.
So he doesn't need a height variance, he only needs a variance for the half-story.
When I looked at the plan, it said that maximum, the height on the plan, unless like, there's, the print is so small. But it looks like 51.6 feet, does that sound correct?
You don't count the cupola and then way you measure the height of a structure is odd under the code.
It looked like the gable was measured at 51.6.
Yeah, it's kind of how.
Right, there is a measurement of 51.6. The way the code measures it, as Lisa points out, is you take the average grade at the front entry, measured to the median between the ridge and the eve.
So it's not the actual height?
Okay.
The height is defined, it's the height is defined by the, by the code and the cupola is exempt from the measurement of the height. So this building comes in at 49 feet nine inches.
Really? Without the?
Despite it being 51 in other spots, yep.
Okay.
Yep. I move, we accept the architecture as presented for buildings 12 to 18, conditioned on the ZBA half-story variance approval for building 6 to 18 and the planning, and the planning board approval of the corresponding site plan.
Which is already.
Which has already occurred. Moved and seconded, call up the question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Joan?
Aye.
Motion passes. Seven to zero, myself, aye.
Thank you again very much, have a good night.
Thanks, have a good night, good night, Phil. See you next month.
See you next month.
All right, next up, we've got Hudson Heritage Monument directional signs. Who's on representing Hudson Heritage tonight?
Good evening, Susan Burke, representing the applicant.
Hi, Susan.
Everybody hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
I'm going to try and share my screen. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So thank you very much, the planning board, for your time tonight. I guess we may have put the cart before the horse here in our, in our application, but we're really trying to get as much done as we possibly can before the holidays hit and everybody goes away again and what knows what's going to happen with COVID. And because, because our district, our zone, HRDB does not have a code, it makes everything more difficult for approvals and, and whatnot. So both the planning board and the county seem to be stuck on the fact that we can't really come up with a definition of exactly what type of sign we have, whether it's a directional sign, a freestanding sign, a wayfinding sign. It doesn't really seem to fit anything. But we, we did design the sign to be sort of in keeping with the pylon sign. And it, it really comes from, from necessity. It's not something that we want to put up, it's not something we want to spend money on, but the site, 36 acres, you need signs to figure out where you're going. The Winslow Gate Road is almost, a little bit over a quarter of a mile long, I believe. And you really can't see that far. That's, that's the same distance as from the town hall to Route 44. I don't think you can see Route 44 from your office. So really, this, this, this is really done out of necessity. So one of the definitions for directional sign is a sign used to direct the public to specific uses, areas or places where there's safety or convenience. And currently, the definition is on the premises, but we need it to be on the site. It's just a, to me, that's a minor detail. So that may be something that we need to look at when we get to zoning and, and we write the code. And may, we may need to include that. But as moving forward, if we can just get the look and the feel of the sign down, then, then we can order the materials and, and that kind of thing. So the other comment was that we were going to set a precedent for this type of sign. But these signs are really all over Poughkeepsie. We have them honestly as ugly as could be at the shops at South Hills. I think what we're proposing is certainly a whole lot nicer looking than, than this. And it doesn't, it isn't with your code of dark background and light, but, so I'm, I'm not sure where that came from. And, and these signs are much bigger than what we're proposing. This was the original sign that we had submitted and going back and, and thinking that quite possibly it would be a little junked up with too many logos and colors. We redesigned the sign today, yesterday, today, with one color. It's, it's, we lowered it to the ground. And we put a generic panel in the bottom. We have national tenants and they want to be on signage. That's not, it's not our choice. It's our national tenant, these tenants, they need, they need presence. They're paying a lot of rent and they want signage. We also probably failed when we submitted to submit three different signs because the signs are going to be different, obviously you're going in different directions. So the arrows need to be different and the tenants need to be different. We have, in our, in the northern area, we need to direct tenants to, to direct customers to the tenants on the south side of the site. And on the south side, we need to direct tenants to the north side. And everybody needs to be directed to our, our anchor tenant. So, you know, we're open to whatever the board wants us to do, it's just, it's a necessity. It's not money we want to spend. We just feel that it's, it's important. So we, you know, we changed the design a little bit, we made the pillars a little bit smaller and we lowered it to the ground.
All right.
I don't know how everybody feels about that. Does anybody have any questions?
All right, thanks for presenting. You go to Eric for recommendations.
Sure. So we, we reacted to the application as presented, which was for site plan and architectural review of these three signs with a single design. The one definition that clearly applies from the code is in section 210-123A, which apply, it's a freestanding sign, which requires site plan approval by the board. So we reviewed it from that perspective and also, it would also thereby require architectural review along with the site plan. We recommended the board do those two things concurrently since they're closely related. Other descriptions of the sign are descriptive, they're not regulated by the code. So in that respect, we just, we suggest the board discuss it. It sounds like the applicant has some thoughts about, that the board could react to with regard to the design, the size, the contents, and what the appearance of the sign would be. We're certainly receptive to the concept of wayfinding signs. We've seen them at other developments, large developments in the town. There's no objection to that concept. If they want to have different designs at different locations, that's fine. We would be happy to review them. And I know at least one of the board members had, had a couple of questions about materials, thinking it would look like the pylon signs up front. I know Brady Brigger earlier talked about the brick that they have on site and they had talked about using those for the pylon signs of Route 9. The board might want to think about, you know, some similar design features or materials for these signs. So you have our comments and we recommend you discuss it. Oh, I guess the only, for any action the board takes tonight, if you choose to grant it, then you will need to respond to the county planning department's recommendation for denial, which would require a reasoned explanation to them. And if you decide to deny it, then you would have to provide an explanation for that on the record. If you decide to defer it, which, which isn't in here, we'd be happy to talk to the county with a revised sign submittal. And perhaps they might come around with a different recommendation on a different, on a revised application.
All right, thanks, Eric. Just had a quick question for the applicant. You know, the original, the sign that we had in our packets looked like they were kind of backlit, light background things, but this looks more appealing to, you know, brown, darker background of white letter. Is there, how are you planning to, doing any lighting for these signs for nighttime?
No, the signs will not be illuminated, they're going to be reflective vinyl.
Okay.
So they're not, they're not anything like the pylon sign. Certainly, plating this in brick would be probably virtually impossible because the brick, those, the pillars on the pylon sign are three feet by, three feet, I believe. And Bob, I think you're on, if you can.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, good evening, guys, it's Bob Seaver from GNS Group, Lodi Signs. Everybody hear me?
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to, to have a tastefully done brick column for a sign this size, it would completely overpower the signage itself, in, in my opinion. I, I think we, we took time and really tried to design something that stayed with the whole look of everything with the, the caps and the decorative elements to the, to the poles. And, you know, I just, I think it was, it was, it was done tastefully with good intent and I, I think it's very important with a, you know, with a development like this, with this many commercial buildings and this many different entrances, you know, people need to know where they're going. And, you know, I did notice the county's comment, I think, or some, a comment about a three-square-foot directional sign, and that, that's just not realistic for a, a complex this size with this many commercial buildings.
All right.
To be, to be effective.
The material.
My concern was that we had all the tenants listed on the pylon side and then suddenly they're all listed again here. So.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Say again.
It, it felt like to me that we had, you know, we approved those pylon signs out of Route 9, which listed all the tenants, and then as soon as you get a quarter mile up the road into, into here, we're listing them all again potentially, but now.
Sorry.
But if you're only listing, you know, some of them, that's, makes more, more sense to me.
Okay.
In any case, we have to go around and board and, and see what the people think of it. Let me start with Peter.
Just two things, number one, you know, it's a large project. If I'm a tenant there, would ever help my customers can get to find me, the more happy I am. So the, the, the directional sign really is, doesn't concern me, but the materials do. This is an historic district, an aluminum sign, you know, with the white vinyl. It does not, this, this is an historic district, it's called Hudson Heritage. You have millions of brick there that you could use to build a sign. And I don't think it would be a detriment to the sign at all. And it would certainly lend itself to the character that, you know, that's, this project is supposed to portray. So those are my comments.
All right. Yes, it is historic. I mean, I like the fact that you're proposing something smaller than the original, because it did seem massive to me. Let's go to Ben for comments.
Well, as they stated, there's no regulations for signs for this district. But the county refers to directional signs, 210-131F. And the planning department says here, 210-123A. So what do they want? 131 or 123? What is it that we're looking for?
I mean, what is, I mean, how, what's the progress? I mean, we're, we're going through approving different signages in this development without a sign code yet. So what's the, what's the progress on getting it a sign code before we?
Right.
Before we approve all the signs for the whole development?
Let me, let me just chime in, just, just to, to focus everybody. So I believe in.
David, could you get a little closer, could you get a little closer to your microphone?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. And Mike and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but these signs are regulated as freestanding signs under, under the code, right?
Correct, correct.
So as a freestanding sign, the standards are, are your, it's a site plan standard and an architectural review standard. You don't have specific standards for freestanding signs in your code. You do have specific standards for signs attached to buildings in which other districts already have design standards, which the HRDB does not yet. That's what's being worked on. And I don't believe that those standards are what's affecting the, the review here, right? This is, this really is just a straightforward architectural review, site plan review for these freestanding signs.
That's correct. And just to answer Ben's comment about the county's reference, they're referring to 210-131 that refers to a category called exempt signs, which isn't, which is signs that are exempt from sign permit review. And since these signs don't meet those criteria, that section is not applicable. It's not an exempt sign. That's the only, that's, the county was a little, that was what their reference was. But it's, it's not germane, it's mutually exclusive from the second, 123 that regulates freestanding signs.
Right, yeah, because the 131 is more like a small sign, an exit sign, like it says, to park an area, something like that, it's not a.
Right.
It's not, right, I don't think it's addressing, it is not addressing this type of sign, right?
Correct.
So this, so this meet, this has to meet the regular 210-123A then?
Yes. You know, the only thing that might be different is when we finish the sign regulations for the district, which are in progress but are not done. You know, we could include additional types of signage or specific requirements related to this type of signage, but that currently does not exist, so.
I mean, that's what I was hoping that, you know, because as Peter pointed out, it is a historic district that.
Yeah.
That this code would help, help guide.
We all agree.
What it should look like.
Yeah, I agree too.
So that's why I'm.
We all agree.
You know, a little bit leery myself of.
We didn't submit the application, the application arrived. And so we have to.
Yep.
Address the application.
Let's continue around the board, Nicole, do you have comments?
I mean, first off, the, the, the picture that we received was completely different from the one that we're looking at right now. It is a historical district, so we have to keep that in mind. You know, some type of brick detail would be nice, even if it wasn't real brick on the pillars. But again, this is more of a sign showing you where to go and not necessarily right in front. So, I, I mean, I don't really know, I.
It's got.
I don't know that I have anything else to say about that, so.
I mean, it's got the, you know, the capstones on there, which, you know, which mimic the, the pylon signs on, that we've approved on Route 9 as well. Can you just clarify again what the material, material is of the pillars as well?
Sure, sure. The, so the pillars will be basically aluminum cladding over an aluminum pole, painted to match a, a color from the Kirkbride Building, I believe, which was specked out by the design consultant. There's going to be acrylic and exterior grade PVC, you know, also known as AZAC. Basically, you know, I, I understand the historical side of, of things, but we designed signs so that the customers, once they're set, it's done. The, the brick thing, again, it's going to become overpowering. It's, I, I don't think it's necessary for a sign this size to have brick columns. I understand where you're coming from with the historic end, but, I mean, these are, you know, these are beautiful little directories, I mean, little wayfinding signage. I don't think they're too big, especially when you look at the Poughkeepsie Galleria and the, the shops at South Hills. I mean, their signs are significantly bigger, the, the South Hills are 15 square feet. The Poughkeepsie Gallerias are, I believe, 28 square feet.
Well, we're talking about, you know, those, those were done 30, 40 years ago also, so we're.
No, 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 the Poughkeepsie Gala, those are all new, those are in 30, 40 years' old.
The problem is, this is not the Poughkeepsie Galleria, this is not the South Hills Mall. This is a historic revitalization project.
With freestanding buildings, not one, not one single building you can drive around. These are freestanding buildings on both sides of the road, you have to be able to know where to go.
It's being brick is not going to have an effect on the signage. You know, the medium is the message, I don't know if you're familiar with that term.
Enlighten me.
But this district is an historic district and has to be treated like a historic district.
That's why there's design elements on these signs that, that incorporate things from the original concept That's why there's design elements on these signs that incorporate things from the original concept of the buildings.
I know, but they don't reflect the historic nature of the property.
Well, is the.
Aluminum and vinyl do not reflect that history.
We don't build signs out of wood anymore, so that, I mean, the aluminum is the only way to go. And we don't build signs this size out of steel because it rots. Aluminum is the way to go.
I have a question for you. The, these pillars, is there any way you can make it look like brick even though it's not brick?
We can, the prob, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, can you do it with paint? Can you, I'm just wondering, yeah, go ahead.
The problem is, is the size of a brick. Now, the size of a brick is what it is. You know, it varies a little bit, you know, maybe two and five eighths by six or two and five eighths by five inches. And it's going to grow substantially from that size. I mean, I wouldn't expect you to do a brick pier, that's a pillar that's, that's two bricks wide. I feel like it would look silly. You'd want multiple bricks, and then you're growing into something that's.
No, I'm saying, can you make it look, look brick-like and not use bricks? That's what, that's my question.
Yeah, but it's, but it is going to be, the bricks, we would scale them down maybe and, and route them out of, let's say, route them out of, let's say we route veneer out of PVC or something. But it's going to be significantly small, like we'd scale the bricks down, and I just feel like aesthetically, it's going, it's going to look a bit odd.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, how, what are the size? What is the width of the?
Sorry, you could wrap the pillars in a, in a painted-looking thing, but it's going to look stupid. It won't look real, and it feels cheesy that way.
Right, agree.
What is the, what's the current width of the proposal?
There's, there's six-inch columns.
Oh, only six inches, okay.
Yeah, they're scaled down. I think the originals were eight, before we scaled these drawings down.
So six inches is, yeah, not a lot of room to work with for brick, I would agree.
No, it, it, it's just, it would make the sign just look like it's going to, like a monster if you put brick on it.
I mean, I understand historic, but my tendency is to, you know, not have these too big.
Carl, this is Rocco.
Yeah, go ahead, Rocco.
I mean, I, I agree with the fact that this is a historic district, and I know that there's a lot of brick in use, but there's also a lot of stone. Would it make sense to make these stone pillars to reflect the area? What is the base? Is the base poured concrete, or is that a?
There'll just be small individual footings for a sign this size, probably, let's say, a foot and a half round by, you know, three and a half feet deep.
Sure, but there's, but there's also a lot of stone, if I'm not mistaken, used on the site that historically was used. So can these, can these pillars be made out of granite or something? Maintain some more of the historical. It could be kept in that size range, six inches, you said they are?
Yes, correct, correct.
That's, that's an idea.
Different material than brick, yeah.
I mean, I don't know what the board thinks about that, but that would be.
It sounds good to me, Rocco.
I mean, you know, you can easily get stone columns made. You can probably buy them off of the shelf, actually, at that size and stuff, and just put the caps on and do that. I, I, I mean, that's my idea. I think this, I tend to agree with all the comments that have been made that this doesn't keep with the heritage aspect of it. And I think you guys are really clever enough to come with a workaround. And that's my suggestion would be stone. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Rocco.
Carl, this is Eric. I'm just going to suggest, as the board goes around, I'm hearing a lot of useful comment about the material and color. But the applicants also raised questions about the tenant signage, which was also part of the discussion. And so the board should probably provide some guidance in that regard as well.
I think, I think maybe if you put too much on the pillars, it's going to detract from what the sign says. It's easier to read with a solid pillar. I know we want to preserve the historic theme of this, but, you know.
But if we do a brick base around the bottom.
Brick base?
That might help.
Instead of the white, is that AZAC down there?
Yeah, just do an, you know, an entire brick base around the whole bottom and stick some flowers in it.
And eliminate, we could eliminate the pillars.
You just can't, you can't clad those pillars in brick. It's going to look ridiculous.
Yeah, six inch, I agree, six inches is too small. We don't really want to make them massive.
It's too, it's too big. The bricks are too big.
Right.
We could do a brick base.
I prefer to keep them smaller and do a base like, you know, a base like brick perhaps. What about, do you have any ideas if you worked with any stone, as Rocco has mentioned?
We can do a stone base or a brick base. I just don't think putting stone or brick on those pillars. This is a small sign. It's going to look like, it's just going to look like overweighted. The pillars will become bigger than the sign itself if you have to clad them in something.
All right. Let's hear from a couple more board members' ideas. Bob, you have any?
Yeah, I like, you know, Rocco's suggestion about stone. And, I mean, I'm not certainly privy to all the different types, but I got to believe that there are some small stones that are consistent with what was around the rest of the property that aren't going to make an overwhelming pillar. And depending on what color they are, I don't think it's going to detract from the sign itself. I don't know why, you know, you can't look, look at that kind of an approach and maybe show some examples of what that might look like.
All right. Joan?
I don't really have a huge problem with the sign. I like the dark background much better than what was previously presented. And I, you know, recognize that with national brands, you're just going to have to acquiesce to their demands. It is a small sign. I, I tend to agree with the sign people here that if you begin to layer on a bunch of different elements, it's going to overpower it, and it might have the opposite effect of what the intention is. You know, maybe it would be helpful to have a few mockups to see a side-by-side comparison. But generally, I really, I don't have an objection to this proposed sign. I like the scale. So, those are my comments.
All right, thanks. Yeah, myself, as I said, I like the fact that you've shrunk it down from the, what we got presented with. And I was concerned that too many tenants would be listed on, on these signs as well. What is your take on how many, how many of the different tenants are going to want to have listings on here? You know, I see you're showing four here now, but is it going to be, somebody want, is it going to grow up to eight or something?
I mean, one of the comments.
I don't believe that it'll grow. I mean, this is, this is the center sign, the south sign.
The fact that, I mean, I like the fact you put Hudson Heritage Shops and Parking. That's kind of a wayfinding thing. Shoprite, I agree, is in back, so that needs some pointing to get to it. I'm not sure how many of the other tenants really need.
Yeah, the county had pointed out in their comments that, you know, you do have the entry signs on Route 9 that have all the tenants on them. And so as you come up, the entry drive, let's say, here from on the south, you know, yeah, having a sign that maybe points you to where Shoprite is, I guess, you know, there's some logic to that because it is set back quite a bit further. But each of the buildings, as you come onto Winslow Gate Drive, will have its own sign. And it's.
You won't be able to see the tenants that are on the northern side site when you come in the south side.
You'll know that they're there because you've just passed the other sign.
Entrance, you're not going to have any idea where Starbucks is. And if you come in the north entrance, you're going to drive straight up into the phase two of the project. If there's no directional sign, and you've never been there before, how are you going to know to turn right?
Well, that's why I think if you pointed to the, if you pointed to the commercial district, you know, and so people knew to make the right, that would be adequate. But I don't know that each individual tenant at that location needs to have another sign. That was the question that the county raised, and I think it's, it's definitely worth, you know.
I mean, that's, that's like I said, you point to Hudson Heritage Shops and Parking, and that definitely says.
But these, these tenant spots don't cover every tenant in the, in the place. I mean, they're for specific people, you know, a CVS, Starbucks, you know. People that are coming in, they want, they want signage.
I have it in my, in the Starbucks lease requires us to put them on that, on the directional up there. So, I mean, obviously, if the town doesn't approve it, the town doesn't approve it, but it is in the lease.
Okay, but that's, I mean, they're the first ones on the corner.
Not from the north, on the south side, on the south side, they actually don't need to be on the south side.
They won't need to be there.
On the north side, the north side, maybe you need to be on the north side.
Maybe, maybe if you showed us on each of the individual signs which, what, which tenants you think would need to be actually on the sign.
Although not all tenants are defined yet.
Not all of them are defined yet, but, you know, then we would know at least how many they're going to be.
I don't, I'm going to assume that if we do have a daycare center, that's going to be on there. It's going to be our, our larger tenant. You know, we do have one more somewhat anchor tenant coming in, and a daycare center is going to need a sign.
I just didn't like that you showed, you know, seven.
If you, if you come in the south side, you're not going to have any idea where that daycare center is. It's far. I can't even find my way around up there, and I've been up there a whole bunch of times. I mean, it's vague, 36 acres.
Can you show us all the signs that you have on there that you're presenting right now?
So, we have the, sorry, there's three signs that we're proposing, the south sign, the north sign, and the center sign. So.
The center would.
The north sign, as you come in on the north side, definitely needs to have an arrow pointing to Starbucks at the far end of Winslow Gate Road. Shoprite needs to be on there. And I'm speculating that our other larger tenant that's coming in is going to need to be on there.
CVS is on the south side also.
And quite possibly a daycare, if the daycare, if we do get a daycare. On the center sign, you're going to need to know to go right or left. You're going to need to go left, you're going to need to understand that you need to go left to get on Shoprite. Otherwise, you're going to drive all the way to the end of Winslow Gate Road, and, and there are going to be pedestrians crossing there. You know, we have a green space there. I'd rather not have people driving up and down Winslow Gate Road if they can drive directly up to the supermarket.
No, I understand. The center sign, I don't, is there any need for anything other than Shoprite on the center sign? Because all it has to do is point to the back.
Absolutely. When you need to, um, if you're in this location and you need to get down into this building, you're not going to be able to see this building. You, you need to understand that you can turn in here to get to this building. And then also, this tenant over here, understandably, can be seen from over here, may not need to be on there. But we certainly, our daycare center is way up here.
Okay, daycare and the, daycare and a Shoprite. Has to be pointed to the back. I agree, I agree to those.
Obviously, this tenant, this tenant, this tenant, these tenants, they don't necessarily need to be on, on a sign. But we need, we need to direct customers from one end to the other. And that's basically, I just don't want people driving up and down, up and down, up and down here when they can be directed to Shoprite this way. And, and also from here, they need to understand that they need, that Starbucks is this way.
Are there, are there tenants that you don't feel need to have directions on any of these signs, small ones?
Well, a Smoothie King in here, right, in this building?
Well, if somebody wants to go to one of these, they're trying to find one of these smaller tenants. How do they do that?
Smoothie King's right on the corner.
Nowhere directing them where it is.
Nope. There isn't.
Well, it is, it is a kind of a main.
Some of the tenants are probably not going to be too happy that they're not on, on a directory sign.
I mean, it's kind of a Main Street concept, so we're not, you know, there's no sign directing people to every tenant on other Main Street type of projects.
Right, they're, people get out of the car.
Picking larger national tenants that.
But I can understand a couple of national.
Want direction to their store.
I understand pointing to Shoprite and daycare in the back with the middle sign and, and as well as Shoprite, both the two end signs. Starbucks on the other side, and maybe another, and the daycare, both directions, but. I guess, you know, let's review it again. There was a suggestion to put maybe a brick base. My concern is if, you know, I'm trying to keep this sign minimally looking. If the base gets too big, it can become a massive thing. I don't know. What are your thoughts on who suggested a brick base, and what are your thoughts on that?
I guess we can wait.
Well, I think we were talking about how we can make it look a little bit more historic.
Yeah.
And Rocco had talked about stone, and then Bob talked about maybe bricks, and they had mentioned maybe some type of base of brick or stone. So I don't know what you guys think. I mean.
I think Rocco was mentioning even.
Maybe, maybe these would be okay. You definite, they definitely need to kind of look the same because you don't want them to.
I like, you know, I like the white, if you're doing consistent white lettering, you're on the, on the dark background, that gives it a good feel.
Yeah, that looks better from before.
Gives it a good feel. Is there, what is the finish on the, on the color? Is it shiny, shiny or matte?
No, no, no. We use a single-stage paint, a polyurethane acrylic, and it's a satin finish.
So it's a satin, okay. Not too, not too glossy then?
No, not, not at all, absolutely not.
I'd like to see a couple of design options, which include either brick or stone, as Rocco and Bob has suggested before we make a decision. I don't have any problem with having the signs. I think they're needed. It's design I'm having a problem with, and the materials that are being used. So I think if we could be presented with some alternatives, it would, you know, move the ball forward.
I think that's, that's good. We're going to, I think we're going to do a defer here and look at, if you could show us next time the three different signs proposed and what tenants that you know of and directions, so.
What's the material that needs to change besides the columns? Because we don't, we don't build signs to rot, so is the metal sign body okay? Is it, is it the poles that we're having an issue with, the cladding?
I think it's the poles that everybody's focused on. I like the.
Okay.
The signs themselves. I like the caps on them. I personally like the base the way it is versus if you put brick around it, it might get too massive. Or, but if you have it, well, maybe if you have it in a little landscape thing, as long as it's not too, set up too, too high, you know what I mean? If it's going to raise the height of it, then that, then I won't like that. I don't know what people's thoughts are. Maybe you can show a rendition with the, some kind of landscape brick base, just as a, to see. Anyone else have any suggestions of what they'd like to see? Other than any specifics, or let them try to think of something different. But I like the direction you went in here versus the original thing we got in our packets, for sure.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, I'll just move that we defer. Hold on, I'm just going to waive site plan and public hearing for this project. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to waive site plan and public hearing. Call the question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. At this point, I move we defer site plan and architectural review approval for the Hudson Heritage Minor Directional Sign Application. And ask and ask the applicant to look to bring back what we've asked for, some alternative and more descriptions. Is that, did I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called a question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
And myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Think you're on the right track, but, uh, anything that could make it a little more historic or whatever we can think of.
Okay, thank you very much.
Will do, thanks everybody for your time.
Right next up is Nashawatt Dental Architectural Review. Who's on for representing this one if they're still out there? Amy?
Hi, everyone. Can can you hear me?
Yep, we got you, thanks.
So, this, uh, received conditional final approval in, I think, May or June for the site plan, it's the renovation of the existing building at sixteen Vassar Road. Being converted into, it was a bag, it's being converted into a dentist office. Um, the the drive-in for the bag is being enclosed, and that's going to be an employee lounge.
Okay, great.
That's the only exterior renovation, that and the adding of an egress wind, uh, door. The rest is all facade. So, can can you see the, uh, the rendering?
Yes, yeah, we're seeing it.
Okay, so the mechanicals will be hidden by the the extension of the building up above the roof. Uh, the 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 gray portion of the building is gonna be a hardy plank, and the romantic walnut is it's a Trespa product, it's a wood composite. The windows are staying and the.
So the picture you're showing now, is that more representative than, we have one in our packet that looks a little redder?
It looks redder, I, yeah. Well, the, uh.
Printer printers now, I think that that looks more like walnut there.
So the one you have is, I think that's what you're looking at, right?
No, I was looking at a different one that was just the end of the building.
So because this is a PDF, I think the color might be different from when we printed it, if you're looking at a hard copy.
Yeah, that's what happens sometimes.
Yeah.
But that looks.
So. The sign is going, the freestanding sign is going to match same materials and color scheme. I I know it was too big earlier today, so I made it smaller, now you have a fifty-square-foot face with double-sided, so each side is fifty feet, fifty square feet. And it's going, it's going to go at the intersection of of Vassar Road and Pine Tree Drive.
All right.
Well, that that picture you showed with the sign, that's the only one I got in the package. Did we receive these?
The sign came in an email.
Yeah, just that one, just the sign.
You should have received a hard copy of of the, uh, the plans, uh, other, everything but the sign.
The hard copy of the sign I have is the one that looked very red, that's why I was, but it's the same material as the, uh, same walnut.
Yeah, it'll be the same material. So, you know, for the site plan approval, I don't know if you remember, it's just going to be parking lot improvements, um, restriping, we're not really doing anything underground, running the electrical line out to the proposed side.
Yeah, the parking lot needed some work. Okay, from an architecture, architecture standpoint, uh, I like that, looks good, you've hidden the HVAC, that's that was a goal of this.
Yeah.
Anyone, uh, anyone wanna chime in with comments on architecture?
Uh, I like it. Certainly an improvement to what's there, and I like it.
Yep.
I think it looks really nice.
I appreciate that they're, you know, reusing this building and with with some good improvements.
I think it looks fine, it looks a lot better than the one I got in my package.
The only, the only thing you're gonna have to do.
So, uh, what?
The, uh, your, the sign, you might need a variance for the sign if you're trying to keep it that size, I don't know if you wanna shrink it a little to.
I was on the phone with Chrissy today, and she she explained, she she, I wasn't sure how to size it, how she came up with her numbers, but so the one that's shown is fifty square feet per side, which is code as far as I know.
Okay, now meets the code, okay. All right, then. Yeah, that did, you did go down a little bit, good. All right, um, any other comments from people?
No, it looks good.
I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
And there's no variance, as you said, so we don't have to be conditional, so. Any, uh, I'm called to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero.
Oh, this is Eric, I'm just gonna ask that Amy, she displayed to you, um, a sign with different dimensions than the one that we sent out by email that hadn't been, so if she would just provide the, uh, the sign as presented tonight, uh, to the planning department for filing with the decision, that would be helpful.
Okay, I can print that out. I'll drop it off in the morning.
Electronic and hard copy, please.
That'll be.
I think you already, I, it's electronic, I think I sent that to Carol.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, it, I'll drop off hard copies in the morning, and if you need another electronic, I'll send.
Just one.
Okay.
All right, looks good. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Yeah, Eric, they, you know, it was it was nine feet by six feet, and it's shrunk down to six by six for that part of it. All right. Next up, we have some time extensions. Does anyone have any comments on the various time extensions? Seeing none? I moved that the planning board grant two for Chabat, Chabat Lubavitch. I moved that the planning board grant two ninety-day time extensions of conditional site plan approval from October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty forward to April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, noting that no further time extensions are available.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Greystone Dayhave. I moved that the planning board grant two ninety-day time extensions of conditional site plan approval from October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty forward to April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, noting that no further time extensions are available.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Paul's Public House Time Extension. I moved that the planning board grant one additional ninety-day time extension of conditional site plan approval from September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty forward to December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, noting that no further time extensions are available.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. Capolino Subdivision at Vassar Road. I moved that the planning board grant two ninety-day time extensions for the Capolino Minor Subdivision application, moving the expiration date from October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty to April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks for the time extensions, last one up, we have a discussion of Red Oaks Mill.
Was Paulus taken off?
What's that?
Paulus Public House, was that taken off?
No, uh, we we voted on that one. I think we did, yeah.
Yeah, we voted on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, just before Capolino. I did that one. So next up is Red Oaks Mill Neighborhood zoning amendment, looking for a referral on the proposed drive-through. Drive-throughs, uh, let me go to to Mike to explain.
Yeah, just quickly, this is, um, a, uh, on September second, the town board adopted a resolution to, uh, defer this zoning text amendment regarding drive-through facilities in the Red Oaks Mill Neighborhood Services Center District to the planning board for an advisory recommendation. Um, there will be a public hearing, uh, the town board will be having a public hearing on this on October seventh. Uh, this was a draft zoning text amendment that was requested by Councilman Bill Carlos, it would allow restaurants with or without a drive-through uh, in the Red Oaks Mill Neighborhood Services Center, and currently restaurants only without drive-throughs are permitted. There's also a small modification to the design standards, uh, for drive-throughs that, uh, is intended to kind of minimize uh, some of their potential adverse impacts, uh, by, you know, for example, not allowing for additional curb cut.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it said no, no additional curb cuts for egress or ingress to the street.
Right.
Yep, and architecturally integrated into the building.
Yeah.
Okay, um, my two cents is I, you know, it's it's written, it's proposed as a, to make it as of right. I, my preference, I think, you know, we don't wanna have too many of them in that area, so we, I think it should be more of a special use that we could approve or disapprove. Right now, there, I think there's, uh, three drive-throughs remaining there, we just are losing that old bank. But there's a drive-through for the two remaining banks and the Gulf Station as well as the Rite Aid, I guess there's four in the area already, so it's not, but they're non-conforming. Lisa, do you have anything to say about, uh, you know, what, having it as of right versus as a special use permit, is there a difference in how we would approve it?
Well, if it were crafted as a special use permit, then whatever standards, then you would need a corresponding code section that says in order to have a drive-through with a restaurant, this has to occur, and you need standard, performance standards to be put in there. And then any restaurant that met those standards would arguably be able to have a special use permit. So, I guess the question would be what standard you would want that would not be part of, you know, that that don't exist in the code now. So, for example, you have a gas station and you say, you know, we don't want it too close to this type of neighborhood, and we don't want, you know, various things with gas stations or other businesses, you do a special use permit because there are extenuating circumstances you wanna make sure are addressed. So, are there, I mean, other than traffic queuing, I really don't see any issues with, um, having a drive-through with a restaurant as of right. It would seem to me it would be part of a site plan approval, um.
Lisa, can I ask a question?
I guess maybe.
Can I ask a question about that?
Maybe I'm thinking of it wrongly.
No, but hold on, let me, let me just ask a follow-up question, um, there are general, um, standards for special use permits in the code though, right? That, so when you do have a special use permit, even if it doesn't have specific regulations, there are, there are general standards for special use permit that in theory would give you some additional, uh, I guess, ability to look at a particular project in its context and decide whether it fits or not. Granted, they're pretty general, but, um, but they 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 are there.
True.
Right, so does that change thinking on that a little bit?
I'm pulling, I'm pulling them up now to see if there's anything that I think that would affect, um, special, so leaving that issue aside for a second.
Okay.
As Carl pointed out, there are a number of drive-throughs, um, for restaurants in the district now, and allowing, if the board were to do a positive recommendation, that would make those not not, no longer non-conforming, which might be a good thing. But it does open the door to allowing, um, them to come in for any other restaurant in the district. And you had mentioned, um, like, Rite Aid or those, this specific, this amendment is specifically to restaurants with drive-throughs, so we're talking about Dunkin' Donuts and things like that, and it would not apply to the existing drugstores or other entities that might want.
Lots of other chains, and they're still.
I think this is gonna be really important going forward, not just in the Red Oaks Mill area, but for other places and other areas, especially when they're stating that we're going to have this second wave of COVID possibly as early as November. So if that's the case, restaurants are gonna be closed yet again for only delivery or pickup, so if they have this option of drive-through, that might really help as far as, uh, their business is concerned.
That's a good point, I guess.
What is it, in Arlington Town Center, is that special permit or special use permit, or is that as of right in the Arlington Town Center?
If you give me one second, I'll look it up. Um, special, so the first criteria for allowing special use permits say that special uses are declared to possess characteristics which require that each specific use be considered an individual use. And so, it's a permitted use except, um, but it gives you these other the general conditions, there shall not be any detrimental effect by the establishment of such use on other uses within the district. It's in harmony with the orderly development of the district, and then the location, nature, and height of buildings, walls, and fences, don't discourage development of adjacent lands. Part, all structures, equipment, and materials are reasonably accessible for police and fire. And that the use meets prescribed requirements for the district in which it's located, including minimum yard, et cetera.
It also refers to performance standards.
M is the, right, noise, discharge of water, traffic access, parking, circulation, landscaping, so.
So, Lisa, am I correct, if if it's a permitted use, there's no ability, there's no ability to say no to it, there's a site plan, it would still have a site plan review, which you can modify.
Which we could deny or modify.
Right, right, but if it, but in terms of the use with a special use permit, it's assumed to be permitted, but you are able to evaluate the particular circumstances of that location against those performance standards and those general criteria. Just, you know, on the off chance that there is something that is, would recommend against allowing it. So it gives you the ability to say no, uh, it probably in a lot more, you know, uh, on a stronger basis than you would if it was only site plan. Is that, uh, correct?
Yes.
Way to understand that?
Have a, so have a little more teeth or a little.
Peter, to answer your ATC question, restaurants are permitted, um, in ATC with no drive-in or drive-through. And then let me see if they are special permitted from there. No, it doesn't look like they're allowed at all.
So everything, everything, well, we have a special, we have a special Main Street overlay drive-through. overlay, drive-through overlay.
Right, and the only thing that I think that was approved under that, if I'm correct, is Popeyes, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but otherwise, all of the other drive-throughs in Arlington Town Center are pre-existing.
Pre-existing, yeah.
There's a drive-through overlay district?
Oh, yeah.
For Main, for Main Street. It came, it came about with the Dunkin' Donuts, I think.
It's actually at the end of the ATC district regulations.
Was it?
I think.
You know, I'm, I'm for, like, not a green light here, and not a red light, but for a yellow light. You know, I, I agree with what Nicole is saying, you know, I think that restaurants should have the option of having a drive-through, provided they qualify, and that's, they'll do, they can do that through going through a special use permit application, and I think most, you know, if they're, if they're within reason, should be granted this special use permit, and it makes sense, but I think just to have a blanket green light without any type of interface with the, with the planning board or another board, doesn't make any sense going forward.
And we're still getting the site plan.
It's great, I think if, giving restaurants that option, which they don't have now, of being able to apply for a special use permit, based on the comments that Nicole has made, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any sense whether, and I don't know if this is an appropriate question or not, but whether this was intended for proposal to apply to a specific restaurant in Red Oaks Mill?
Dunkin' Donuts.
Maybe Dunkin' Donuts, because they wanna go into that other building, possibly?
The old Chase Building.
The old Chase, yeah.
Well...
So, for purposes of the analysis for the board, you have to look at it because it will apply to every building there that's able to be a restaurant within the district, and looking at the Main Street drive-in overlay district, I guess, one of the questions I have for the board is, do you want it to be a special use permit, or do you want it to be an overlay district? Do you want this board to have control over it, or do you want the town board to have any control over it in making it an overlay district? I kinda like, I lean towards special use permit, but that's...
Yeah, I think...
The overlay is a bear trap.
That makes it a bad thing, Peter?
With a bear.
If you're a bear.
I mean, among other things, it, you know, there may be elements in the ATC overlay district that you want to carry forward to your, if you were to make a special use permit, for example, it says, it talks about an eligible lot, and it says, you know, you can't have less than a half acre, and you not at less than 100 feet of frontage, so it may be that, you know, you may wanna, whether it's you or the town board, carry some of that and say, you know, drive-through in Arlington have certain minimum requirements in addition to the other special use criteria, or not?
I mean, I like, I like where they said, you know, 21, it said, drive-in and drive-through facilities should be integrated architecturally into the buildings, and not permitted to have additional curb cuts to Vassar Road there. And I don't believe any of the existing drive-throughs have additional curb cuts now, so, in Red Oaks Mill, that kind of will qualify, so how, if we did a special use permit, how would that, would the other existing ones still be treated as non-conforming then?
Well, if, if they are now, if it changes so that you can have a restaurant with a drive-through, then every restaurant with a drive-through would be a conforming use, you know, assuming it met whatever other criteria there were.
Okay, okay.
So, if you said, you know, no additional curb cuts, and they don't have additional curb cuts, then they become conforming. If they did happen to have an additional curb cut for the drive-through, then it would remain a non-conforming as to, the use would be conforming, but the curb cut would be.
Do we have any idea of the, you know, within the Red Oaks Mill district, what percentage of, how many drive-through or drive-ins are there?
I counted four, and I don't, the only ones are restaurants currently, it's two banks, and the Rite Aid, and the Dunkin' Donuts Gulf Station.
So, is the thought that, the places are gonna create drive-throughs or drive-ins?
The fifth one was the bank was, that's, that's turning into a dental office, where that drive-through's going away.
There is at least one vacant parcel, a fairly substantial vacant parcel in Red Oaks Mill, but that's, I mean, most of it is currently developed, you know, not to say that something couldn't be redeveloped in the future, I don't know how much pressure there is for that in Red Oaks Mill, but, you know.
And I guess, the other...
Fortunately, if you have something that's a drive-through now, like a Walgreens, if you allow this, then in the future, it could be a Dunkin' Donuts or a Starbucks, you know?
True.
Be some sort of a restaurant use, as opposed to having to stay a commercial use like that.
Right.
Would there, if it was gonna be considered for a special use permit, given the limited experience we have with drive-throughs, it might be possible to come up with some performance standards that are particular to drive-throughs. I'm thinking, for example, you know, the issue might be buffering, if there's an adjacent residential use, drive-throughs are a little bit noisier, the outside speaker, pedestrian connections on the site, the layout of parking, the amount and the layout of parking, those have tended to be challenges during site plan review of, of drive-throughs like Popeyes, or the McDonald's, or the Main Street McDonald's.
The one that's gotten me and other municipalities is how many cars are, need to be allowed in a queue, in the line.
Right.
Because you don't want, you know, you've had instances where they're packing up onto a free line, because, you know, Starbucks is having a set, or Dunkin' is having its free donut that day, so, you know, I think there, it's not a bad idea to have certain minimum standards, but...
Yeah.
So, it sounds to me, just because it is 9:06 and trying to move this along, that the board's recommendation would be to give a positive recommendation to the concept, but with the added criteria that it be a special use permit rather than permitted as of right.
So moved. Yeah, that's, that's, that's where I'm going, does anyone else have any other thoughts?
I think you're the mind reader.
And I, and keeping the other language in there, like, item 21 that they modified.
Yeah, the only thing they would change is they would move down to, you know, the section below it.
Switch to a different section.
Right, right.
All right, I move that the, that we give a positive recommendation to the modifications with the, with the exception of changing it to a special use as of, versus as of right.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. And, you know, we're in the middle of the new master plan as well, and who knows what this district will, what changes will be coming, forthcoming in the next couple of years, anyway, but we'll see.
I move that we terminate the meeting for this evening.
Second.
Moved and seconded to terminate, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Terminate the meeting.